Good evening. I'm Donna Bartlett May with the League of Women Voters of San Diego, and I will be your moderator for this evening's virtual candidate forum for San Diego City Council District 2. I'd like to thank the Claremont Town Council for co-hosting tonight's event, and I'd like to welcome our candidates, Dr. Jennifer Campbell and Dr. Linda Luca. The League is proud to be nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose candidates or political parties. Views expressed are those of the candidates. Sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by the League of Women Voters or any other sponsors. The League moderates candidate forums using a format that is fair and informative. We have asked the candidates to keep to the issues of the position rather than personal attacks, because our goal is for you, the voters, to be able to learn more about candidates than you get from campaign ads and social media. I am not a resident of the city of San Diego and therefore have no stake in this race. A League website called Voters Edge California is now available as your comprehensive, nonpartisan outline guide to elections covering federal, state, and local races. You will find a link in the chat. All candidates for local offices have been invited to include their information on the website at no cost. We are excited that KPBS Radio now directs their listeners to our website. This forum is being recorded and will be available unmodified from beginning to end on our website, lvwSanDiego.org. Questions were submitted online before the forum, and you may also submit questions now using the link provided in the chat box. Please remember to use civility and respect in wording your questions and frame them so both candidates can answer. Questions will be organized to assure topics of greatest interest are asked. Assisting tonight are League question screeners Jane Andrews and Miles Palmeroy. Timekeeper is League member Michelle Morgan, and our Zoom administrator is Kim Knox. Candidates will have two minutes from their opening statement, two minutes for their closing, and one minute to respond to each question from the audience. Dr. Lucas will give the first opening statement, and Dr. Campbell will give the first closing statement. Questions will be asked in random order. Dr. Campbell, your opening statement, please. Your mute is on, Dr. Campbell.
I thought you said Dr. Lucas would be first. I wasn't quite ready.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Dr. Lucas, you're first.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, good evening all, and thank you to the Claremont Town Council and the League of Women Voters. I appreciate Councilmember Campbell's attendance and willingness to participate in this event. It's great to see you. The role of city council member is incredibly important. It's the link between our communities, your voice, our voice, and City Hall. The city council member is elected to represent all constituents in the district. We must remember that this election is a nonpartisan election, which is very exciting. We are friends and neighbors, and we all must work together if we're going to succeed in making forward progress and enhancing our quality of life now and for future generations. I have a background with extensive experience in healthcare, academia, business, and leadership. I'm a dentist and have professional licenses in nursing and real estate. Additionally, I'm an educator and a small business owner. My leadership experience spans many years. I served on the board of dental and non-dental entities, and past president of the San Diego County Dental Society, past trustee and now current board member of the California Dental Association, chair of the Southern California section of the American College of Dentists, just to name a few. I've earned the reputation as someone who is a goal-oriented problem solver and someone who works tirelessly to get action. So why am I running? I entered this race because I'm sad, frustrated, and quite frankly angry with the decay of our neighborhoods. I couldn't sit back and complain about it any longer. I knew I had to be part of the solution to make a difference. I love this community. The time is now.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for coming to the candidate forum tonight. Claremont Town Council is my hometown council, as I've been a member ever since I moved to Claremont many years ago. I'm so happy that the redistricting board united all of Claremont into District 2. After being a family physician for 40 years, I flunked retirement. I ran for city council four years ago because I knew our neighborhoods deserved better than the Republican incumbent was giving, especially neighborhoods like Claremont, where not getting the attention they deserved. As city council member, I've been tackling our toughest challenges: homelessness, housing, healthcare, rising costs, and crime. On short-term vacation rolls, I brought the common sense regulations residents have pleaded for for years. On homelessness, as a family physician, I'm fighting every day for the urgent action we need. We've thrown out the failed policies of the past, and now we're opening more shelter beds than ever. We found permanent housing for thousands of homeless, and we've launched a landmark conservatorship program to require treatment for our most severely mentally ill homeless people. On housing, I have voted for every housing measure that brought affordable and middle-class housing, because I believe every San Diegan deserves a safe place to call home. During the COVID crisis, I put my healthcare experience to work, keeping us safe. We follow the science. We fight back against misinformation. And now we have a 90% vaccination rate, among the highest in America. We have to keep up the work, because working families are struggling. I'm proud to be endorsed by Mayor Todd Gloria, the San Diego Democratic Party, the Firefighters Union, and many, many more, which you can find at my website, drjencampbell.com. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight.
Thank you very much. Now go to the questions and candidates. If you need any question repeated, please just ask me. Our first question tonight is: This questioner feels that in the past Claremont was often given less attention than other District 2 communities, and they would like to know how do you plan to give each of the several distinct communities within the new district specialized attention they want and need. Dr. Lucas?
Thank you for that. So my plan involves having community liaisons that live and breed the community. So Claremont, along with Point Loma, Mission Beach, and Ocean Beach, will have a distinct representative living in the community so that we make sure that the pulse is on the community issues. And furthermore, I would like to hold quarterly meetings with the presidents of the town council to see which issues we share and which issues need special attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you so much. I think one of our biggest problems is infrastructure. And ever since Mayor Gloria became mayor, he has made it a priority to just fix those streets that need to be fixed rather than wasting time and money on streets that didn't even need to be resurfaced, as the previous administration did. And so that's one big thing we need in Claremont, is to get these streets fixed. So I've been working with our mayor now, trying to get that moving a little bit faster than it has been. The other thing is throughout our district that these streets need to be fixed. And the other thing is, of course, we as council members attend meetings whenever we can in all of the neighborhoods of our district. So I will be attending these meetings now that COVID has gone down in person, which I really missed for the last two and a half years. So I'm really glad that I've been able to get out and be in person lately, and I hope that that trend continues. A lot of it is due to our good vaccination rate.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, we'll start this question with you. How will you attract public safety professionals to San Diego as well as keep the ones we have?
Public safety is extremely important. When I first came to council, we found that our police officers were among the lowest paid in the 30 cities around us. And so we rank near the bottom with 30 of those cities. After four years of advocating for much better wages and benefits, we are moving now toward the top of the rankings. Recruiting and retaining the best and the brightest first responders will make San Diego a safer place for all. And working with city, community, and state leaders will get us over that line. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas?
Hi, that's a great question. You know, what we're currently doing obviously is not working. We're hemorrhaging police officers. I've had the opportunity to meet with our community liaison officers, and they all share the same sentiment. They are frustrated. They are stressed. They are burnt out. So they lack the resources they need to do their job. Technology was always at the forefront of our conversation. They don't feel like they have the latest, newest, useful technology to help them do their job. Certainly compensation entered the discussion. They need to make a fair livable wage. They also want to be connected to our communities. I would like to bring them back. Community surveillance, the police storefronts. That's an important way to get them connected back to the community. And certainly incentivization, you know, looking at their retirement plans.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, did you answer that question?
Yes, I did. Happy to say more if you'd like.
Sorry, I lost track for a second. I'm suffering from a cold tonight, so goodness knows where my head's gonna be. Okay, the next question, we'll start with you, Dr. Lucas. How will you address the aging roads and infrastructure?
Perfect. Yeah, so we have failed in our infrastructure. We've neglected it throughout the years. Our current budget, I believe, is $77 million to resurface the streets here in San Diego, and I think there needs to be a prioritization schedule on which roads are traveled the most frequently, which affect businesses and residents throughout the city. Additionally, I think we have to capitalize on federal and state funding that's available. We have a big federal package right now that is supporting our infrastructure, from transportation to roads and bridges to internet and the like. So there, we have to make sure that we are getting our fair share of the monies available.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you so much for that question. It's very, very important, as I stated in that question about what about the district. I think the infrastructure is really a problem. Just recently, we had a problem with water pipes bursting. This is happening all over the city, and as Linda said, because so much has been let go over the years. This administration has an entirely different outlook. This is the first year we've had this high a budget to repair our roads, and also the first year that we've hired new people to help us mend our pipes and fix our underground so that things go correctly and don't break when they shouldn't. And so we're trying very hard to catch up on what have been let go for over 100 years in some cases. So I believe that this, you know, this will happen. Happened quite a bit. I've talked a lot to the mayor about different places around our district that needed help. He just recently repaved Midway Drive. He repaved Luna Street in Claremont. There are many areas in Claremont Mesa Boulevard that have been fixed, but also Claremont Drive is a mess. It's like driving through a minefield.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, we'll start with you with this one. What are the biggest concerns about our coastal area, and what will you do about them?
I think our biggest concern in all our areas is climate change. It is the greatest threat facing San Diego and our nation. That's why we passed the new update on our climate action plan that puts San Diego at the forefront of fighting climate change. And it's also why, as Chair of the Environment Committee, I brought forward the San Diego Community Power, our clean energy alternative to the big fossil fuel companies. This is a crisis that we must continue to fight every day through reducing emissions, preparing for sea level rise, and ensuring that our water infrastructure is capable of handling coming droughts. I have urged the city to include collection of stormwater into the pure water system to increase the amount of drinking water that we will have access to in the future.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas?
Thanks. Donna, would you repeat the question for me, please?
Sure. What are your biggest concerns about the coastal area, and what would you do about them?
Great. So biggest concerns, certainly we have a number of them. So I think we have to look at our water sources. Where is our water going to come from? We've certainly instituted the Pure Water Program, although that's lately hit a snafu with some other budgetary items that we weren't expecting, to the tune of about $20 million. But we're moving forward with that. We should be looking at desalination projects as well. And we have a real problem in my neck of the woods in the Sunset Cliffs area with coastal and bluff erosion. And we're not really discussing that much. It's a tremendous safety hazard here on the coastline. So that's something that I believe we need to focus on.
Thank you. All right, we'll start this question with you, Dr. Lucas. What is your opinion about ways to address homeless persons who refuse services? What is your opinion about the role of conservatorship in handling this?
Thank you. I've done a lot of research into the homelessness problem that we're experiencing. And to answer the one part of your question, what are my feelings on changes in conservatorship? I totally support the change in conservatorship. I think we have an obligation to help those individuals who can't help themselves and who are at risk for harming themselves or harming others. So I am absolutely in support of the change of conservatorship. I also feel that there need to be pathways for our homeless, and certainly one of the pathways is detainment. I don't think that's the primary pathway. I think we need to offer supportive, comprehensive treatment facilities that address the root causes of the problem, the mental health issues and the drug addiction. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you so much. I'm a lifelong physician, so I've been fighting for urgent progress and long-term solutions to treat homelessness like the full-blown health crisis that it is. And let me be clear, we can't arrest our way out of this crisis, and it's just as immoral to look the other way while people are suffering trying to live on the streets. We're getting rid of the old programs that have failed. We're starting new ones that work. We're talking about mental health care, addiction treatment. We're doing more than talking about it. We're actually getting it done. We have safe parking lots, one of which has now become a 24-hour-a-day lot. We have the mobile crisis response teams for mental health problems. And we also are exploring new and innovative approaches like supportive shelters for certain disabilities such as addiction, and housing of all kinds, homeless conservatorships to help people off the streets and into care. And we've begun preventing homelessness before it starts with targeted assistance for low-income seniors that are on the very brink of homelessness to stop it before it starts.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Okay, we'll start this next question with you. Do you support the ballot question that would revise the 30-foot height limit in the Midway area? Please explain.
This is a really important and excellent question. As you know, I was the lead, along with Councilmember Chris K, because I do love to work in a bipartisan manner, that moved this forward the last time that it was brought up for a vote. And it won by 57% of the voters in the city. Unfortunately, there's been some legal things going on with it that has put it down, down the list of happening soon. It's become a San Diego special, as the mayor likes to call things that go on forever. However, it's very important that people understand that the change in the height limit is only, only in Midway Sports Arena area. It is not anywhere else along the coast. The 30-foot height limit will stay where it is, and this ordinance will support that. It is only in the Midway area, which in the first place should never have been included in it.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Lucas?
Hi, thank you. This is a really important question. So there's no doubt that the Midway area needs to be developed. However, I oppose lifting the 30-foot height restriction. I think it's a very premature conversation to even discuss this when we haven't addressed the necessary infrastructure to support a project such as the development of that area. So we don't have traffic flow patterns worked out, ingress and egress, and the transition from the freeways into our Midway area. We don't have a reliable water source. We have a taxed electrical grid. We aren't really even handling the simplest problems. I mean, the roads around the Midway area are eroding. So right now, I can't support a project that isn't thoroughly planned out. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas, we'll start this one with you. Are there revisions to the short-term vacation rental ordinance that you would endorse? Please explain.
Thank you. This is a loaded question. So I have four short-term vacation rentals in one block. Two of them, you'd never know they were vacation rentals unless you just watched the traffic flow in and out. The other two are pretty much a disaster. They're disrespectful of the neighborhood. They're loud. They party until all hours of the morning, and they leave their trash behind. So while I think the short-term rental ordinance is a start, I think it's a work in progress. One of the biggest changes that I want to see personally is the clause about the bad actors. So it's my understanding that bad actors are identified as those that break code, not those that are disruptive to the neighborhood. So we can complain about the parties, the noise, the litter, but those really aren't taken into account when it comes to the lottery of who gets to provide short-term vacation rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Yes, thank you so much. As you know, when I first came to council, everyone told me it was absolutely impossible to do anything about short-term rentals. And I agree that there are a lot of nuisance properties around. So what I did was I called everyone to get together and discuss on all sides of this issue, and we came up with a compromise that put a cap on the number of whole-home rentals. In San Diego, most of the whole homes in Airbnb, it was 90% here in San Diego that were whole homes, taking those off the market for people who live and work here to either rent or buy. So we put a cap on that, a limit of 1%, and there will be a lottery for people to get a license to be able to have them. And the licenses have to be only to an individual. No more of these corporations coming in, buying apartment houses, and kicking everybody out. We will have a strong regulatory code that gets rid of the bad actors. That is written into the law. Furthermore, the law will be looked at every year to see if we need to upgrade it and change it.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, we'll start this question with you. What is your opinion about vendors in our public coastal land business areas? And would you revise the recent ordinance on this, and if so, how would you revise it?
Well, since I wrote the recent ordinance on this, what I will say is that no one else, again, would step forward to take on this difficult project of protecting our public spaces, but regulating San Diego's vendors in a way that would meet the requirements of state law, which demanded that the cities make these regulations. Our regulations are win-win for the public and the vendors. Back in June, this ordinance went to effect in most of our city. On June 22nd, everyone noticed, all of a sudden, the vendors crowded into Bellevue Park were gone. And this is true in other parts of the city where everyone had to behave and follow the rules in this ordinance, which are pretty strict. They have to be licensed, permitted, et cetera. And now I'm proud to announce that just last week, our Coastal Commission finally gave us permission to go ahead and use our ordinance on the beaches. We'll have to go through a few legal maneuvers first, but within two months, we should be able to have this in effect citywide.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas?
Thanks. And again, the vendor ordinance is a start. I look at it as a work in progress. It's not perfect. I think it'll be refined as we see how successful the enforcement is. But I feel that the disparity that exists between the vendors and our businesses are really detrimental to our brick-and-mortar businesses that incur great costs to keep their businesses alive, unlike the vendors that pay a $38 permitting fee. So while it's a start, again, we need to watch the enforcement and see how that pans out. But I do think that June 22nd was the day that the vendor ordinance took effect for all of the areas except for the coastal region. So our coasts have been inundated with vendors blocking our beach access.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas, we'll start this one with you. What is your opinion about housing density and in particular implementation of the two recent state laws, SB 9 and SB 10?
Great question. So we have much of our neighbors, many of our neighbors are workers, are police officers, are firefighters, that can't afford to live in the communities that they serve. This is a problem. So I think if we had proper infrastructure planning, I think it is quite necessary to increase affordable housing. That said, SB 9 and 10. SB 10, I believe, is very unrealistic. Putting 10 units on one parcel is just not good for our neighborhoods. SB 9, it's a start. It can work, although I would like to see all of the setbacks enforced. I would like to see parking taken into consideration, which it currently is not. And as far as ADUs, one on-site with owner occupancy in the main house. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Housing. Housing prices are way too high here. We've needed more middle-class and affordable housing for years. I authored the short-term vacation rental law because 90% of our STVRs were taken up by people who were renting for a week or a month. And so what we need to do is make sure that those places get back on the market for San Diegans who live and work here. And that's why I kept their number at only 1%, which will bring the number down by over 50% now. Took the Coastal Commission a year and two months to approve our law, and therefore it has been slow to get it started. However, it will be started this fall, and it will be carefully enforced. And so that should help put several thousand more houses onto the market or more apartments to rent. And I also authored the bill to build the new neighborhood in Midway, which will eventually provide thousands of affordable units, as well as market-priced units and low-priced units. I'm focused on solutions that continue to increase the amount of housing available, but keep San Diego its unique, beautiful self. We don't want to be New York. We don't want to be LA.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. We'll start this one with you, Dr. Campbell. What measures would you take as city councilor to support small businesses?
Thank you very much. Our city council, the way it's composed right now, is very much in favor of small business. 98% of the business in San Diego is small businesses. It's very, very important. So when COVID hit, it was very hard on our small businesses, and most of them had to close. And so what we did was we passed ordinances to keep them going by making sure that the city would help them with their rent and their utilities while they were not earning any money. And furthermore, the federal government had many programs that helped. And, you know, it's been a really tough road to hoe, and our city treasury, I wish it was richer, but we did the best we could to help people, and we put a limit on evicting people also to try and keep people from becoming homeless.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas?
Thanks. Small businesses are the backbones of our local economy, and we must support them. So I think that we have to look at the taxes, the regulations, and the fees we're imposing to our business owners. It is becoming prohibitive to run a business in the city. And then we have the vendors that are in competition with us. So I think it would be nice if we would look at our regulations and our fee structure and maybe lighten it up a little bit, release, you know, release some of the regulatory issues, and incentivize residents to frequent small businesses in our district and in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start this one with you, Dr. Lucas. How will you address the lack of middle-income housing in San Diego?
So, you know, housing is certainly problematic for us. I think that we have to start looking, first of all, at the free market. What is driving the costs of the housing market? Is it just a lack of affordable housing? Or are we so overpriced that people are just leaving town, going to other states and taking their businesses and their tax money with them? So I think we have to be So I think we have to be realistic in the development. I think ADUs are a nice place to start. Like I said before, I support an ADU on a property being mindful of setbacks and parking while the owner lives in the primary building. That's one way to increase intergenerational wealth and keep families together. I also support the development of housing projects, as long as there are an adequate amount available for middle-income residents.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you so much. Yeah, this is a really, really important issue. It's unbelievable how few middle-class level houses, as well as affordable, have been built here in the past few years. And one thing I did was try to help change the red tape and the fees that builders have to go through. I have been endorsed by the Builder Industry Association. And I could tell you, one thing I did was push since the beginning of my election, that the developer impact fee be changed. It was based on the amount of square footage, not square feet, but on the volume of that particular piece of property that they were going to build on. So it paid them to build McMansions because they could sell them for a much higher price. So what I did was, and what the city has done, is change it. So the DIF is based on the square footage of the units. Therefore, they make just as much money if they make smaller units and not make McMansions. And they might even make more money because they'll have more people housed. So I think it was a very good change to make.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, we'll start this one with you. What steps would you take to meet the need for more childcare that is affordable in San Diego?
Oh, wow, that's a really important one. We definitely need to have more childcare. The city is thinking about, and I'm in favor of this, fixing up our rec centers. I think most of the rec centers in District Two need to be refurbished and remodeled and made safe so that they can serve as daycare centers for every neighborhood. And we need to encourage those who used to have home daycare centers to get back into that business. Many of them had to quit during COVID. And so I think it's very, very important. It should be one of our top priority issues. God bless our police foundation, the Police Officers Association. On their very own, with their own money, raised enough money to make a daycare center for police officers and other personnel in the department so that they could help with recruitment. Because if you want to get men and women into the force, you have to be able to provide childcare. And so they've done a wonderful job, and it's going to open very, very soon. The city leased them the property for almost nothing. They're proud of it.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas.
So that's great. I echo the sentiment with our Police Officers Association for their creativity in coming up with their own childcare facility. I think we have to incentivize other businesses, though, to follow suit. I think giving businesses some kind of perhaps monetary incentive or tax break to bring childcare to that business, to alleviate the stress for the parents and the financial burden. I also agree with using, you know, the rec centers that are underutilized for housing childcare. I think that's a great idea, as long as they are safe and able to be used as childcare facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas, we'll start this one with you. City of San Diego recently adopted a new strengthened, excuse me, climate action plan. Do you support it? And if you do, what additional measures should the city take to address climate action?
Great, thanks. Yeah, it was exciting that we had one of the first climate action plans. That said, again, I think it's a start. I think we have to look at creative ways to move away from fossil fuels and natural gas. And we are doing so with the initiative to be, you know, all-electric vehicles by 2035. But there also has to be a plan for recycling, repurposing, and disposing of the components necessary to make that transition. San Diego has a wonderful climate, right? Perfect for outdoor activity. So I would love to see more biking, more walking, more public transportation. We've already started going green on new construction. So I think these are all steps in the right direction. I also think we should look at businesses incentivizing hybrid work schedules. Less traffic on the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you so much. I agree. I am very much in favor of the Climate Action Plan and voted for our new plan. It's very impactful. If we could just lower our greenhouse gas emissions, it'd be tremendously helpful. And of course, we have to worry about the sea level rise. Prepare for that. But we have to do it in a way that balances the needs and the reality. So we have to be very careful how we manage this. I agree with improving bike lanes. I have pushed for years, and now it seems like the city administration is really taking this up. And that is for Level Four bicycle tracks. So they are completely separated from traffic so that they are safer. Many bike riders have told me they would ride their bikes to work if they could do so safely. And right now, it's really questionable. So I agree. We're trying to, I was on the Sandag Board for a while, and we were trying to make this countywide. We really want to do that. We want to improve mass transit as well, and the many, many other things that we can do.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, we'll start this one with you. What is your position on the expansion of wetlands in Mission Bay? And do you support what is called the Rewild Mission Bay proposal?
Well, I support making as many changes as possible while keeping in mind the balance of the needs of all of the city. And so I am in favor of removing the part of camp land that is located in the northeast corner where currently the Kendall French Marsh is, and making that, extending that Kendall French Marsh into a bigger marsh. And so hopefully, that, you know, and that is pretty much the city's plan. So let's hope we do that. And I know that the the people who are involved with that property have agreed to do that. And we will be taking those old horrible trailers that are full of asbestos. It took them four years to get all the permits from all the environmental agencies, state, local, federal, in order to move those out. So we will soon see DeAnza, the boot of it, cleared of those old horrible RVs.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas?
I'm sorry, one more time with the question, please.
What is your position on the expansion of the wetlands in Mission Bay? And do you support the Rewilding Mission Bay proposal?
Perfect, thanks. So we have to preserve, and I would like to see our wetlands, our marshes expanded. But it has to be done so with a balance, like Dr. Campbell said. We have to make sure that it's a fine balance. I think that we also have to look at the use of Mission Bay. There are hundreds of thousands of hours of recreational activity in and around Mission Bay and at camp land. So again, you know, it's keeping the balance, keeping the balance of our natural resource and with a mix of recreational activity as well. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Lucas, we'll start this one with you. What should be done with what is referred to as the 101 Ash Street mess?
Ah, yes. So, well, what should be done with it? Well, as we know, the city approved the settlement deal against the advice of the city attorney. So now we have to move forward, and unfortunately, it's going to be at the cost of our infrastructure pot because that's where the monies are being drawn from. So what do we do with it? I think we can't decide what we're going to do with it until we get a real cost analysis, a real inspection, and identify what is wrong with that building, what presents safety hazards for those that are going to occupy that building. And then, what is the cost? And where is the money coming from? Once we have all of that kind of ironed out, then we can decide what we're going to do with it. But right now, we own it. It's ours, and we're going to have to shoulder the cost of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
The previous Republican mayor made a terrible deal on 101 Ash Street. This was several years before I was elected to city council, and I've been focused on cleaning up this mess. His deal paid too much for the property, did not have the city do its own inspection before buying it, and agreed to buy it as-is. Furthermore, the loan he agreed to could not be paid off early. And as every homeowner knows, that should be part of every mortgage deal or every lending deal. The only choices we were left with were flawed. We were between a rock and a hard place. And I made the tough decision among many bad options, what was best for our city that we do what the council majority voted for and what the mayor also agreed with me about. And so let us move forward.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, we'll start with you on this one. What is your position on the redevelopment of the sports arena site? What are your most important criteria regarding the choice?
Well, this is a great question for me, since I was very much involved with authoring it for the 2020 election, where it passed with fifty-seven percent by the city voters. It's very important that we re-beautify this area. Unfortunately, the former mayor did not do it correctly according to state law. We had to start over, go back to ground zero, and start over and follow the law. The state is very adamant that a certain percent of new housing should always be affordable and even less expensive than affordable. And so in order to get state approval for these projects, we had to comply with the state law, and we did so. And now, as you know, we have whittled it down to three teams of contenders who want to redevelop that forty-eight, forty-nine acres. They were all excellent. The mayor had to make a judgment and pick one. There were outside experts, consultants, who looked at each one, and he came to the conclusion that he wanted the one that he picked last week. And now, it'll be up to the council, which Mayor Faulkner never let it up to the council. It was always up to him what he picked. And now we're going to have the council take part.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lucas.
Thanks. That area has so much potential. However, four thousand new units, eight thousand five hundred to ten thousand people moving into that area, retail space, a two-hundred-room hotel, and a fifteen-thousand-seat arena into the Midway District, where traffic is already a nightmare, where our streets are falling apart, where we don't have the proper infrastructure and we don't have a plan for it. I sat through that development meeting a couple of weeks ago, and all three of the developers said, well, we don't have an infrastructure plan yet. So I guess we're going to keep our fingers crossed that once we build it, the streets will just fall into place and our water supply will increase. So I think we're making some bad decisions. The other thing is, I don't even agree that the sports arena belongs in the Midway District. I'd like to see that more centralized, with mass transit available, like the trolley. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas, we'll start this question with you. How will you coordinate the plans for the development of the Navwar site, Midway site, and also the Mission Bay post office site on Barnett Road? These three are very close to each other and need coordinated planning.
They absolutely need coordinated planning. We can't keep continuing with the duplicative efforts, moving forward with a project without proper planning, and then having to either stall or abandon our project because we didn't think about the consequences, nor did we have proper funding sources. So it is essential that planning take place. I love strategic planning. I think you have to bring those parties together that, first of all, are experts in the field, and we have many. We have a wealth of knowledge here in San Diego. We have to get community buy-in, community support for the project. And then we have to find our funding sources, who's going to pay for it. And then it's an orchestrated effort by all to drive that project.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you so much for that question. It's very interesting that you tied three things together. First of all, Navwar belongs to the Navy. Federal government, whatever land it has, it makes all the decisions. It doesn't necessarily have to follow our laws. We worked in the city with Navwar for a couple of years, talking with them about how we'd like to partner up to redevelop that area. And they then withdrew. So that is no longer a question. In terms of, the other one you mentioned was the Midway area. And I agree, the traffic is horrible right now. It needs to be fixed, even now if we build nothing new. But the new plan that the mayor picked is only a half a mile away from the transit stop where the trolley and the train stop in Old Town. And so it's, they are planning to make safe pedestrian bicycle and carways from that over to the arena, as well as possibly a spur. Let's get a trolley spur over to the arena so people don't have to worry about their cars at all and could get over there pretty easily. A half a mile isn't so hard to take care of. In terms of the roadways there now, they definitely have to be changed.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell, we'll start with you on this one. What is your approach to public surveillance? How will you address the privacy issues?
Well, you know, the council recently passed new regulations on this, and they include making sure that everything is safe because we do not want to interfere with people's personal rights. But on the other hand, things like traffic cameras that can take pictures of crimes as they happen have been extremely helpful in helping us solve crimes. And so we want to make sure that we find a balance again between treading on people. But on the other hand, we have to be safe, and safety is first.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas?
Hi, thanks. So, first of all, I'd like to just draw attention and give kudos to Tula Vista Police Department. Tula Vista Police Department has implemented the Live 911 call response team and drones to answer some of the police calls. We are hemorrhaging police officers in this city. We must be creative in how we are going to respond to citizens' calls. So I think that employing, well, first of all, I think we have a fully-staffed drone squad that we're not able to utilize because of current regulations. In Tula Vista, they employed their drones thirty-five hundred times with just about five hundred arrests as a result of those drones. We have to start being creative in augmenting the police staffing in order to decrease response times and keep us all safe.
Thank you. Dr. Lucas, we'll start this one with you. The city has developed climate goals that encourage better availability of alternative mobility solutions, such as walking, cycling, rideshare, buses, light rail. Should we move faster or slow the process? What's your position on these goals?
So I think we have to plan differently. I don't think it's about speed. We see what happens when we act in haste. For instance, the Mir Mesa bike lanes. You know, we did something without thoroughly thinking about the consequences. We didn't communicate to the residents thoroughly, and then we had to spend money undoing what we just did within a very short period of time. So I do think that we need to plan and get the input from those who use the current bike lanes, as well as prioritize our routes. These routes have to make sense. They have to end somewhere practically, right? So they can't just be the bike lane to nowhere, and they have to be safe. Our bike lanes right now are not safe. In my area alone, we are having traffic accident after traffic accident involving bicyclists. Not safe.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell? You unmute, Dr. Campbell.
Then, excuse me. Yes, we require balance. We require planning. I don't think it has been as well thought out as it should have been. One of the problems is that Sandag was in charge of a bunch of the changes in our city, and we didn't even have a say in them, such as Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue, Hillcrest. So what we need to do is take charge and say, look, we have to have safe bike lanes. They should be Class Four, Level Four, Class Four bike lanes, separated from traffic. Number two, we have to make sure it makes sense. And so we should get more involved in the planning. I think what happened before was, in a different administration, things were done very differently. And now it's changed. It's only been a year and a half or so, but a lot of things are changing in the city, including planning things correctly and thinking ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Back in 2008, drawings and funding were provided for an upgrade for the Balboa Library to a minimum standard library facility. Funding was pulled back due to construction because of the city deficit. Other community libraries have been moved to the front of the queue of upgrades, and Balboa has been forgotten. How will you, as our representative, correct this oversight? Dr. Campbell?
What we do is, we, as a council, work very closely with the head of the library, who does an excellent job, and also with the Library Foundation. They come and report to us twice a year and give us their ideas for plans. They've been strapped from money, and they've had a lot of problems because of COVID. They lost a lot of their workers during COVID when they were closed. And so now we've made new incentives and new ways to hire people for the library system. And I'm happy to say that as of now, every single library in the city has reopened. Yes, there are many that need to be updated, and we need to push for that. And I will be happy, as the new representative for Claremont, that part of it that has Balboa and the Claremont library place in it. All we have in my section of it is the Bergener, which we did put money into, which I got. So what we need to do is push for the other libraries throughout our district to be upgraded. I got $4.5 million just for the OB library expansion.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Lucas?
Hi, thank you. Libraries are such a special place. They bring the community together. So they're a vital source in our communities. So I think that as a neighborhood, we have to prioritize our needs and our wants. And prioritizing the library would be a priority for me. So I think the first thing I would do is just figure out utilization. I would chat with the community about their use, their wants. If we're going to develop it, how are we going to develop it so that it is useful to all in the community? After that, I will fight hard to make sure it gets the proper funding it deserves.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more question. We'll start with you, Dr. Lucas. Do you support Measure B, the People's Ordinance? And please explain your response and give recommendations on how to better manage waste.
Perfect, thank you. So, you know, when one looks at the ordinance, I understand how it is deemed unfair. And it allows for property owners to have free trash pickup, but it doesn't take into account our condominium owners who don't have access to free trash. That said, I believe there's a lot of wasteful spending in this city. And I don't support a tax increase or a fee for garbage pickup until all other funding sources have been exhausted. I don't think that's the case right now. I would like to take a hard look for where we can subsidize that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell?
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, Lynda, because when this issue first came out, you said that you were in favor of changing the People's Ordinance, that you could see that it was unfair and inequitable. And indeed, it is. The current funding system we have for trash pickup is by the city from the general fund and only to single-family homes, not to property owners, to single-family homes only. This isn't fair. Half of San Diego rents. And believe me, they pay the commercial trash pickup in their rent every single month. So the money the city spends on subsidizing trash pickup is money that we aren't spending on important priorities like parks, libraries, infrastructure, wages for our city workers, also, which comes out of the general fund. So everyone should share in the cost of keeping San Diego garbage-free.
Thank you very much. Before our candidates give their closing remarks, I want to thank you for attending and asking such good questions. Be sure you're registered to vote. Ballots will be sent out beginning October 8. Also, please attend more League events where we give in-depth information on all sides of critical issues affecting our communities at lvwSanDiego.org. And now for the candidate's closing statement. Each candidate will have two minutes, and we'll start with Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. In my first term, I've done what's right for San Diego and what's right for District 2, even when it meant standing up to powerful special interests. I'm proud to be a Democrat, the party that stands for equality and justice for all Americans, a woman's right to choose, fighting climate change, protecting public safety, taking on gun violence to try to get it down, trusting science, defeating misinformation. When anti-vaccine extremists tried to stop our COVID response, I stood firm, and we protected San Diego's safety. We stopped evictions, we relied on science, and now our city has a 90% vaccination rate, among the highest in the nation. When people told me I couldn't get anything done on vacation rentals, I got everyone together and found a compromise with a 50% reduction in short-term rentals, common sense regulations. That's what we need, finally. I'm running to keep delivering for the people because in tough times, working families need leaders who can count on to tackle the toughest challenges: homelessness, housing, crime, climate change, the rising cost of living. I'm proud to be endorsed by Todd Gloria, the San Diego Democratic Party, and most San Diego unions, including the police, firefighters, and lifeguards. I've spent my whole life as a doctor, working to keep our communities healthy and safe, and I'll never give up that fight. This election is about whether we make progress with the Democratic leadership that is taking San Diego forward or regress to the Republican past. Everything you need to know about voting, you learn when you got your driver's license. If you want to go forward, put it in D. If you want to go backward, put it in R. Thank you for attending tonight's forum.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dr. Lucas?
Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity and for your time. And thank you to Councilmember Campbell for showing up and participating. Our district is such a special place, but sadly, we are experiencing an increase in homelessness, an increase in crime, an increase in our failing infrastructure, and haphazard development plans that negatively affect our neighborhoods. And we have lost our voice at City Hall. I am committed to being a dependable and caring representative of this district, serving all. The role of city council member is a nonpartisan role, and its role is to make your voices heard, to be present in the communities, to listen, to be responsive to your concerns, and to be a good financial steward of your money. As an academician and clinician for more than 30 years, I help my students understand that if they really want to solve problems, instead of just putting a Band-Aid on them, they must identify the root causes. We, the workers, the residents, the taxpayers, and the businesses are not the problem. We pay dearly to live and work here. We must look at the big picture. We are losing great neighbors and their children, hard workers, our police, our firefighters, and good businesses simply because they cannot afford to live here. It's time to stop with the lack of communication, the inefficiencies, the duplicative and wasteful spending, and with the unnecessary overtaxation fees and regulations imposed by our local government. The time is now. Please help me make a difference. I would be very grateful for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of San Diego and the Claremont Town Council, I'd like to thank the candidates for running for office and attending our forum this evening. And thanks to all of you again. You are here tonight because you follow the League motto, "Don't just be a voter, be an informed voter." Thank you and good night.